Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'll bring this regular city council meeting to order. If you would all rise for the invocation which this evening will be led by Swami Ajini Carrillo from Interfaith and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance that will be led tonight by Councilmember Yavino.
Namaste and good evening. Lord, may your goodness and love be present among us today. Come bless our gathering with unity, hope, and vision. Lord, we pray for unity. Build in us all a deep respect for one another so we may serve our community. Lord, we pray for hope. Come stir your hope within our hearts and help us renew our commitment to take care of others. Lord, we pray for vision. May your vision fill our hearts as we seek to represent our citizens in making thoughtful and proper decisions. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you all so much for that. I especially enjoyed the prayer for vision as I forgot my glasses tonight, so hopefully I can get us through this meeting. Roll call, please.
Mayor Hill.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kitchen.
Here.
Councilmember Dodd.
Here.
Councilmember Yavino.
Here.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Councilor, any agenda modifications this evening? All right, seeing none, that'll move us on to proclamations, awards, and brief announcements. Due to his activity with the police department and public safety, I have asked Councilmember Yavino to present proclamation A, National Volunteers Week.
Good. I take great pride in presenting this to you guys. As I said earlier, we have volunteers over the shores as well, and they're indispensable. My job couldn't be done on a daily basis without what you guys do and how you do it, even to the smallest detail, and I appreciate it wholeheartedly. The proclamation is for National Volunteer Week, April 15 through April 21, 2018. I did remember my glasses. Whereas throughout our history, our nation has been profoundly shaped by ordinary Americans who have volunteered their time and energy to help their fellow man, and we have always been at our best when people come together to realize a common vision. And whereas here in our beautiful city of Sebastian, people come together daily to give of their time, effort, and compassion to make this a better place and create a better life for others. And whereas volunteer service is a lifelong pursuit that strengthens all of us, and with every act, our communities are drawn closer and our county is forged stronger by the generous spirit of volunteers. And whereas today, along with our gratitude to the many volunteers in our community who give unselfishly of their time, we also want to pay tribute to our city hall and police department volunteers who have contributed thousands of hours of their time to make our city operate smoothly and to keep citizens safe from harm. We are all richer for their presence. Now therefore, I, in lieu of Mayor Jim Hill, Councilmember Yavino, Councilmember of the city of Sebastian, do hereby proclaim April 15 through April 21, 2018 as National Volunteer Week, and urge everyone to observe this week by volunteering and pledging to make service a part of our daily lives and to express our gratitude to those who give every day.
I'll give a couple of words.
Oh, sure.
Very good, thank you. I was gonna sing, but I won't do that. Mayor, city council, city manager, city attorney, city clerk, people of Sebastian, we thank you very much. I don't know if you was on, you was one today, but we had 150 bikers come through this town, and we were out there doing it. We thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Councilmember Yavino. And also due to his commitment to child protective services and his dedication to that industry, I've asked Councilmember McPartlin to go ahead and present proclamations B and C.
This is Gary Bocas, he's the supervising attorney for the 19th Judicial Circuit, very important role, and we really appreciate everything you do. And it's a proclamation that is Guardian Ad Lightem Month, whereas the city of Sebastian prides itself on giving back to the community, contributing to the quality of life among our citizens. And whereas the Guardian Ad Lightem Program speaks for the best interest of abused, abandoned, and neglected children who are involved in the court system. And whereas more than 190 children in the community suffer from some form of abuse or neglect each year, and whereas Sebastian community members are encouraged to join together throughout the month of April to raise awareness for those children fallen victim to abuse, neglect, and abandonment. And whereas this effort will give abused, neglected, and abandoned children in our community an improved chance for a safe, permanent home and positive future, now therefore the city of Sebastian do hereby proclaim April 2018 as Guardian Ad Lightem Month in the city of Sebastian, and urge all citizens to give up their time to make a difference in the lives of our most vulnerable children by volunteering with the Guardian Ad Lightem Program.
Honorable Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember McPartlin, distinguished council members, distinguished guests, on behalf of the Florida Guardian Ad Lightem Program, we are extremely gratified and thankful for your participation for such a very long time in the Guardian Ad Lightem Program by members of the city of Sebastian. Know this, it is with pride that we team with you, that we work with you, because you folks make a difference in the lives of children every single day. Once again, thank you very much.
That would help, Gary, you won't be able to call me later. All right. Angel Robertson from Castle. Me and Angel, we set up the memory field, I don't know if anybody had the chance to see it, out there in the city of Sebastian last month. It was 127?
126.
126 flags for the children who died due to abuse or neglect in the state of Florida last year. So this proclamation is Child Abuse Prevention Month, whereas for three and a half decades, Castle has upheld their legacy of protecting the lives of abused children and families. And whereas Castle works diligently with Deveraux and the Florida Department of Children and Families to ensure that every child suffering from abuse has a brighter future and hope for a safe life. And whereas children who have suffered abuse or neglect are at least 25% more likely to experience problems such as delinquency, teen pregnancy, low academic achievement, drug use, and mental health problems. And whereas Castle, along with its community partners, embraces opportunities that can potentially change the way society cares for children and youth. And whereas Castle urges everyone to act now to protect children in Sebastian, now therefore the city of Sebastian do hereby proclaim the month of April as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and encourage community agencies, religious organizations, businesses, and others to support Castle's mission in preventing child abuse and neglect through education and awareness, and to help teach safe parenting.
Castle is much more than awareness program. Our mission is to prevent child abuse and neglect by educating our parents in the community. At Castle, the families participate in our programs to learn how to create healthy, loving, and safe environments for each other. We are the solution for many, and we really thank you for recognizing us this month as Child Abuse Prevention Month here in Sebastian. If anyone would like to be involved with Castle, please visit our website at castletc.org. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's great to have a council that's got so much diversity and such great committed people up here. It's wonderful to work with you guys. Vice Mayor Kitchen, do you have announcements?
Yes. April 13 is the Chamber Concert in Riverview Park. It will be the Ladies of Soul and the LOS Band from 5:30 to 8:00. On April 21, we are having the Natural Resource Board Earth Day and Arbor Day Celebration in Riverview Park from 9:00 to 4:00. And also on that day, there will be a shredding and electronics recycling event behind the Speedway Gas Station at Riverview Park from 9:00 to noon, and community cleanup for household furnishings and white goods at the Barber Street Sports Complex from 9:00 to noon. On April 28, it's Waste Tire Amnesty Day at the Indian River County Landfills from 9:00 to 3:00. No commercial tires at that time, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Any additional announcements from council? All right, seeing none, that will move us up to the consent agenda. Council, would you like to remove any items?
I'd like to pull items C and D.
Item C and D. Thank you, ma'am. Anything else?
Move approval of A, B, E, F, and G.
Motion second. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Kitchen.
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd.
Yes.
Councilmember Yavino.
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Yes.
Mayor Hill.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Item C.
Item C and D actually go together, they're both regarding Ford Explorers, and I'm gonna defer to the city manager for the explanation.
Thank you.
Yes, and thank you for pulling that, Vice Mayor Kitchen. The issue is, just coincidentally, after this agenda was published Saturday morning, I saw a notice on television about 13 police Ford Explorers in West Palm Beach being pulled from service for engine problems. I was concerned about that, because I knew it was on our agenda. First thing Monday morning, had our fleet superintendent start an investigation, also reached out to Councilmember Yavino, obviously a member of law enforcement, has some experience with this, and obviously contacted our chief of police, asked her and her staff to do an investigation. I'm satisfied with the answers I've received back on these Ford Explorers. West Palm Beach claims that this is a fuel issue, it's isolated, no sabotage, nothing like that. And we have had good service from the Ford Explorers that we have in our fleet right now. I'd defer to the chief if she wants to make any statement on this, but I'm satisfied that, and would recommend to council that we go ahead with the purchase.
All right, thank you very much, chief. Thumbs up? All right, thank you.
Move approval of item C and D.
Second.
A motion is second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dodd.
Yes.
Councilmember Yavino.
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Yes.
Mayor Hill.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchen.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
All right, thank you, council. That leads us up to item eight, committee reports and appointments. Are there any committee reports this evening? I will report that I did observe the county commission meeting that transpired last Tuesday. I'm not sure if anyone is aware that they had the discussion on the Sebastian's decision to move forward with the fire inspector, fire marshal position here. They obviously oppose it. They opposed it in a four to one vote. Susan Adams was the dissent on that. As, you know, the mayor of the city of Felsmer, they went through the exact same thing we're going through up here. There will be further discussion, I believe the county is wanting to go forward with some arbitration, further discussion. So this is not settled yet, but we will keep going forward, I'll assume, and I'm sure, Jim, you're gonna be working to continue the ball rolling on that.
Yes, if you, just briefly, and I don't know when the last time we went through this here, but what they were talking about in that session is there is a provision in Florida statute under chapter 164 that says before governmental entities can sue each other, there's a process involved. First process is the chief executives from both sides get together to see if they can work it out. If they can't, then the elected bodies of both sides get together and see if they can work it out, and you can do that with or without a mediator, a neutral mediator in the room. And only then, if those processes, that some sort of alternative resolution fail, then one of the entities can file suit against the other one. So it's a process. What they were discussing at the county commission meeting is they directed staff there to reach out to us to discuss it, and they wanted to do that before they triggered this process. And someone were saying, well, that process itself is the informal resolution, but from what I recall, they did not move forward, because they would've had to do it by resolution to move forward with the process.
Oh, for sure. Now, their decision was to write a letter. I have not received that letter yet. Has it been received by the city yet?
No, we have not received it, and the manager and I talked about possibly drafting our own letter, because while the county commission, I think, made a decision based, in good faith on their part, it was based on misinformation that they were receiving from staff in several regards. So Mr. Griffin and I discussed maybe my writing a letter from us directly to their, you know, county commissioners, letting them know what information they received. You know, they're being told misinformation.
Well, I would.
Well, just it's difficult to make an informed decision when the information you're getting is wrong.
No, that's understood. I don't, I would certainly want that letter to be a little bit soft, I'm sure.
Well, the other thing is, we could wait to get their letter and then respond to it.
I think that's a better idea. So let's wait to get the letter, council, and then we can respond as a whole to that letter, whether it be having staff write a letter, or whether it be whatever, one of us. All right, thank you, that's what I have to report. Anything else? All right, thank you. We have no public carings this evening. We have unfinished business. Approve city manager contract, if the document is available. We do have it available, we did have it available a couple days ago, right?
Yes.
Essentially, in terms, so we'll go ahead and handle this. Council, do you have any questions on the document itself, or any concerns? I went through this document, it looked to me to be pretty darn good. There was only one issue in the document that was essentially different than the city manager's, and that was the life insurance, and I don't find that to be an issue, I find that to be something that would be smart to have in the document, is protecting someone's family who's moving into our community. So I would move approval of the document.
Mr. Mayor, my understanding is that we need to, we need to have some qualification on that about receiving a letter from Glades County that they've released him from his contract.
Yes, and that's written into the language of the contract that it'll take effect upon execution by both sides and receipt of that release, which, from Mr. Carlisle, he said that'll be forthcoming on Friday.
And that'll be my motion, that'll be a part of my motion.
Second.
A motion is second. Discussion from city council members? Anyone from the public who should speak on this issue? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Yavino.
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Yes.
Mayor Hill.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchen.
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
That's wonderful. Congratulations, we look forward to getting a letter and having you on staff. Thank you. Next item, item B. Approve agreement with FPL to construct, manage, and maintain a solar canopy at the splash pad. Mr. Griffin?
Yes, sir. I'm gonna want to give a little bit of background to put this in context. This, initially, a presentation was given to council back in July of a solar project by FPNL at three sites in the city. There had been discussion prior to that that culminated in that presentation. A few things happened that overcame events for us and had to put the project on hold. Number one was the illness of our city attorney, a former city attorney, and he had approved those documents and liked what he saw, but when he became sick, we kind of put the things on hold, put it on hold. And then, of course, hurricane season was upon us, and FPNL caught a little bit of some problems with that and wanted to put things on hold. I was in touch with my contact at FPNL, Anusha Chotsky, and he and I got together and we renewed our conversations and wanted to get this going again. What the proposal here tonight is for, I talked about three sites that Anusha and I had surveyed when he was here back in July, June and July, and those were the western portion of Cavcor, the splash pad, and also a site at the dog park. What we are now concentrating on, and what FPNL has agreed to construct, manage, and maintain, is a facility at our splash pad. So they're gonna make a presentation tonight. Bart Getchens is here, FPNL representative, he's gonna be here tonight to make a presentation. Anusha will be making a PowerPoint presentation, and I'll turn that over to them. Thank you.
Bart, it's great to have you up here.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor, and city council, and staff, and all the viewers at home. Before we begin, I'd like to also introduce one of my colleagues, Nancy Flickinger, who is your customer advisor. But I would be remiss if I didn't start this presentation and offer our deep appreciation and a tremendous thank you. You know, Mr. Griffin has worked with us for many years, and I find that he's a man that brings solutions, not just problems. He builds partnerships, which is something I greatly appreciate. His assistance through the years with the airport, the staging site, has sped restoration to this entire region. So he's always professional, he represents this city so well, and I just want to pass along our deep appreciation and thank you. And I can see how humble he is, too, because he's looking down and thinking, don't do this to me, but you deserve it, and thank you again. And now I'd like to turn the presentation over to Anush Chotsky. He is our senior product development manager, and he's going to talk to you about something we're very proud of, our SolarNow program and our solar trees here in Sebastian. Anush?
All right, thanks Bart, and thank you commissioners, Mr. Mayor, for having us tonight. I have a short presentation on the SolarNow program. I know some of you heard about the program last time I was here, and I'll just quickly go through it one more time. Our SolarNow program is a program that allows our customers to voluntarily contribute $9 a month to support solar in the community, and we utilize those contributions to build solar projects in, within our service territory at no cost to our hosts. And integral to this process and this program is our partnership, and in Sebastian, we have over 100 residents that are currently participating in the program. Certainly with any community, it helps establish some of the community's sustainability goals, and it also showcases the commitment to renewable energy, and typically in public areas like parks, zoos, schools, and museums. And in our particular case here, we're looking at a very nice park. There are several benefits of the solar structures that we put up in the communities. One, it serves to provide clean energy, so not only does it have a nice form factor, but it has a very functional form factor. Two, it provides covered parking or shading, depending on the application. And then three, and then most importantly, is the inspiration and education that the solar structures provide, because very rarely are you able to actually get up close to solar. Most of the time they're on a roof or they're in a large solar field. We have some tailored textback technology that we incorporate into the signage and the actual canopy, which allows visitors to bring up a custom webpage for Sebastian specific to the installation that would take place here, the proposed installation here, that would provide information about the partnership, about the parks, and we will work with the city to add additional contact as it pertains to the particular area. Here's some real examples of installations that we've done in communities with canopies. You can see that there's a variety of applications, but most importantly, you can see that the unique design of the canopies are very aesthetically pleasing, they have a very modern design where you're actually able to see the panels underneath the canopies. Most solar canopies actually have the bottoms of the canopies covered for weather protection. We have a technology that allows you to have the panels and be weather tight and be able to see the monocrystalline cells and that sort of thing. And it's a glass-on-glass panel, which is very attractive, and it's a frameless panel, so you don't see any clips, rails. In fact, we have a unique railing system that, for the most part, hides majority of the wiring and the internals or the electrical infrastructure. So you can see that, you know, there's a variety of applications. These are all over the state. The ones pictured here are just some examples that we recently did on the west coast. But we do have our solar trees here in, on the east coast, in Brevard County primarily. The example, or the rendering that I have in front of you now is the one that we are proposing for the Sebastian Riverview Park over the splash pad that is there, and a real innovative use of solar, a real neat application. It's not necessarily a parking canopy, but it is one that's over an area where children play, and it's able to replace, one, replace the shade sails that I believe, you know, does require, you know, a lot of maintenance from time to time. You typically have to take them down during storms and things like that. These are rated to the hurricane-force winds in the area and require minimal maintenance. Any maintenance that is required, though, we do cover. And as far as, you know, it's powder coated aluminum, so it definitely is made to withstand the elements, which is very key to an area like this where you do have some harsh elements that come through. So I think it really has, you know, some multiple benefits in that, you know, provides solar, provides shade to the children who are playing underneath, and just has a real neat presence in the community. So with that, I'll pause and open it up to any questions that you guys may have, but appreciate the time, thank you.
I, first of all, think this is awesome. I look forward to the continued relationship that the city of Sebastian has had with FPL and certainly through the solar program. I have a question about the height of that structure. What is the intended height of that?
So we're planning on making it around 12 to 14 feet.
Okay.
So that, you know, we're still letting, you know, plenty of sunlight in, and you can see that the panels themselves have a translucent nature, so it's not gonna be like a dark covering, but we definitely want, are gonna be mindful of, one, the water features underneath, and two, just to make sure that it's a nice open feel when it is ultimately designed.
Okay, now I'll ask a question of the shade structures that are currently there. What's the height of those?
They are a little bit lower, I think they're about 10 to 12.
Right, so we're not talking about a major jump in height of what's down there, that would probably be the only concern, so.
We can adjust that, we can certainly tailor them to mimic the ones that are there. We have flexibility there, and so when we get into engineering, we can certainly adjust that height.
I'm not an engineer, I just want it to look nice, and so I think it's cool.
Okay.
Any questions from council?
I'm hoping that we can keep the old ones and put them somewhere else.
Yeah, that's a great, great thing. Those are reusable, I'll assume.
I'd like to see them stay down there for the veterans' ceremonies that go on down there, but, because the dog park, if you're gonna put them there, you know, there's problems sometimes.
Well, there's been a couple suggestions from staff. Obviously, the veterans' memorial is a great, great suggestion, and also there has been requests about the dog park. There are two of those shades, two separate structures, so there would be one in the small dog park and the large dog park if they decide to put it there, but that'll be open for discussion if things can be demoed properly and so it can be reused, so, but I'll work with Anusha on that.
Any other discussion?
I have a quick question. So how big is one panel?
Each panel is 280 watts.
No, how big, big, size-wise?
Oh, the size of the panel, it's 18.6 square feet per panel.
Okay, so it's not relatively difficult to actually change one out and install them, and if there was an issue with it, is, I guess what I'm getting at?
Oh, no, there wouldn't, not at all, no. Yeah, if anything were to happen with a particular module.
Some of the projects out there, they're, you know, 100-foot by 100-foot panels, or whatever the case is. I mean, obviously, that's not the case here, but, so turnaround time, if one went down and there was an issue with one, it would be minimal as far as maintenance to change it out.
Absolutely.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, cool. Council motion?
I'm approval.
I'd just like, I'd just like to see a couple at the dog park.
Yeah, that'd be great, I agree.
The tree ones would be great at the dog park, the ones that look like trees. The tree ones would be great at the dog park, the ones that look like trees.
But load it to the ground for the dogs.
At the dog park.
I think we're just about done. I'll motion for approval.
We already have a motion and a second. Vice Mayor Kitchen motioned it, seconded by Councilmember Dodd. Any further discussion by council? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this issue? All right, seeing none. Roll call, please.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Yes.
Mayor Hill?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchen?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Councilmember Avino?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Can you start tomorrow?
Looking on it very soon. Thank you.
All right, thank you guys so much. Thanks for coming on. That leads us to public input. Is anyone from the public wish to speak this evening? All right, seeing none. There's no new business. City attorney?
I have nothing more.
Thank you very much. City manager?
Yes, sir, I did have something.
Janet, one second, sir. Janet, Ms. Begley.
I'm sorry.
Are you leaving?
No.
Okay, very good. Proceed.
A couple, I believe it was a couple meetings ago, maybe about two months ago, I've reported that there were going to be some test wells drilled down by AR paths, kind of adjacent to the splash pad area. Want to report that those wells have been drilled, the initial ones, and actually, they've done a pretty good job of keeping things covered and directing traffic around it. Those are complete. The parking's back in shape now. They'll be able to do what they have to do as far as the wells go for the next year and a half or whatever the time period is. So that is complete for now. I just wanted to report to council. And that's all I have, sir.
All right, thank you very much. Ms. Williams?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor Kitchen.
I just want to say that I truly enjoyed going to the Eagle Scout ceremony on Saturday. It was amazing what those boys have to go through to get the Eagle Scout award, and thanks for being absent.
You're very welcome. Thank you for taking care of that and handling it. Councilmember Dodd?
I just want to welcome our new city manager. I think he's going to be a great asset to the city, and I'll, I don't particularly like losing the old city manager, but since he's chosen to retire for the fourth time, I think, or something like that. So welcome aboard.
All right, thank you. Avino?
I second that. Thank you for, I'd like to say this, thank you for taking the job. Thank you.
For sure.
I was getting a little nervous. If he doesn't accept it, okay. No, thank you very much, and Joe, as we've said before, we're going to miss you.
McPartlin?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. I just have a couple brief issues. I have gotten some public input on the contractor who's doing the swales and driveways. My belief is that anyone who's contracted by the City of Sebastian represents the city as if they were an employee of the City of Sebastian, and my understanding is that there have been some things, well, let's just say that some incidents have occurred that would not represent the city very well. Have you been made aware of any of that?
Yes, sir. Can I elaborate?
Please do.
The person who's in charge of that contract, I passed those along, and this is mostly about a lot of foul language and inappropriate kind of actions out there in our neighborhoods. I have instructed the person who is in charge of that contract to admonish them, to go to the owner of the company and to tell them that we're not going to stand for that. They're in effect agents of ours. They're signs of ours to do this, to do this work. They are representing the city. That's how I view it also. So I agree with you. I have talked to them. As a matter of fact, I think that was last week, when at Mr. Avino's request, I was at a property. So that was last Thursday, I believe it was. Also, another incident was reported to me yesterday, same issue. So yes, we're aware of it. I'm trying to deal with it, and hopefully, we can take care of it.
All right, very good. Thank you. And then the last issue would be the dog park. Is the dog park open now?
Dog park is not open now. This is what we're doing. We're doing some maintenance at dog park, also some construction. We're doing concrete pads for benches, both on the small dog park area and large dog park area. We're putting river rock around the bottom of the fences. We're doing some other maintenance things which necessitated us closing the dog park. I think the issue with the dog park, and this was, this was, the information on this was partially given to me by Councilmember Dodd, the fact that at a Parks and Rec meeting, they talk about we can keep the dog park open or we can close it. No one wants to close the dog park. Coincidentally, we had to do this maintenance. Normally, on every Wednesday, we close the dog park from 7:00 to 9:00 for maintenance, but we had this larger project. Apparently, a sign was put out there that some of the patrons of the dog park kind of thought that, based on what happened at the Park and Rec meeting, and also with the sign, they thought we were closing the dog park. That is not the case, sir. Once we get this done, the maintenance done, we will reopen the dog park, and I will see about getting the sign changed.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much. Nothing else, council? Begging no further business, we are adjourned.